Committee. First thought of our business will be to salute the flag, and I will ask our student rep, Jack Merritt, to lead us through the pledge.
I would like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There will be no chair report tonight. The mayor was unable to be with us tonight, but he sends his regrets. Resource Committee and School Building Needs will be meeting Thursday afternoon. Policy Committee.
Nothing new to report will be meeting sometime after Thanksgiving break, unfortunately.
Student Support.
Nothing new to report.
School Personnel, we have superintendent's evaluation, and I'm going to go to student rep first. Jack?
Okay. It's a big week this week, headed out. Four cards came back last Friday. They are available online in paper. And we'll say, though, I know on some online they're not showing up, so just be patient. I know we will get paper copies on Friday. So, and with that, many kids were still able to get honors and high honors and special honors, which is very good, especially after the very transition into back to learning was very difficult for many students. So it's good to see that even despite this challenge, our students are still succeeding. And then I'd like to welcome Gladys Escobalas, who is the main office administrator assistant, which is very good to see, to FHS Main Office, and see that she was a graduate of Pittsburgh Public Schools. So it's always good to see someone coming back into position, come back to the school. Then they will be Red Raider prize stickers. If you want a bumper sticker, they'll be $5, and they can be through Coach Gardner. This can be through the athletic department at FHS. You can pick them up in cash. And if you really want to support the school and show that you're a true Red Raider, get them on your cars, so everyone knows. Vaccination in the Eastern Clinics are now reaching the ages five to 11 as of now because they have been approved. And from Monday, the 15th today, and also Wednesday, the 17th, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., there is going to be a vaccination clinic that's going on actually right now as we speak for the Monday. And it's important to note that we talk about a lot of these vaccine clinics, and just so everyone knows that on the 6th, that would be like the second dose if you were to get your vaccination on this Wednesday or on, I mean, this Monday, and on Wednesday would be the 8th will occur, just so everyone can plan in advance, so you know it's not just you're getting one dose. We will follow up with you. And pulls us into this pool testing, which now for safety is being acquired for the Winter Athletic, which begins on November 29th, that Monday. So all who want to participate, that must be able to participate in pool testing. It is important to note, even if you're unvaccinated, if you participate in this pool testing, you'll still be able to do those activities. So it's a good balance to make sure that I will feel included without being very invasive. Then the big thing happening right now is Thanksgiving can drive. Always loved that. Beat Lomond Stare a lot, so whenever we can beat Lomond Stare, it's a good thing. So we're leading into the, it's going to end next Monday, which is November 22nd. We hope that we are, can really get into a lot of cans in and donations for that time. There will also be halftime. They will be shown who won, so it's a very important thing. And to talk about that before that Monday, on this coming up Sunday, November 21st, FHS's Breakfast of the Bands. So that's a major thing that many will want to attend, should get a ticket for, and really show your support. And as we're coming out, two MCAS exams for those who like to say that John Avigan Adams was very successful, I think it was around, I forget the exact number of students, in class of 2022 that were able to get it, so it was very good for them and show their success rate and how strong our students are able to succeed and really put in the effort. And also for those that did not, were unhappy with the scores, we're having makeup this week on tomorrow and Wednesday, the 17th. Then also, we'd like to congratulate Estella Blanc, who has issued a Congress citation by Representative Michael Kermesch last week for honoring those who lost in September 11th. So, big week, a lot of great things to report.
Thank you, Jack. Any questions for Jack? Comments? Only comment, again, reminder that canned good drive, get them up to Pittsburgh High School. Let's win both the game and the food drive. So get those canned goods up there.
That's the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to give you the superintendent's evaluation. He was evaluated by all seven members of the school committee, and I'm pleased to announce that it was another excellent evaluation. The superintendent was evaluated on a five-point scale. Exemplary proficient, needs improvement, unsatisfactory, or not observed. On standard one of instructional leadership, Mr. Jokel had a 4.74. Standard two, management and operations, Mr. Jokel had a 4.64. Standard three, family and community engagement, 4.54. In standards and professional culture, 4.75. For an overall evaluation of 4.62. Comments from Mr. Stevens. Mr. Jokel has proven to be an exceptional leader of the Pittsburgh Public Schools during the most difficult times. He has continued to be an effective leader, introducing a new ELA curriculum into the elementary schools, providing much-needed professional development of all staff. He has done an equity audit on the school system and introduced training on diversity, equity, and inclusion. I'd just like to congratulate Bob on the excellent job that he has done. All of the, almost all of the committee made comments, which are available if anybody would like to see them. The only comment I would like to make is if, for next year, that if you have an unsatisfactory or needs improvement, please make a comment, so Mr. Jokel will have those along with all of the other comments. Questions from the committee?
Yeah, I've got a question. So I, I, I feel like I pay pretty close attention, and what I saw Superintendent Jokel do over the last year with the team was exemplary. It was superb, and I do talk to people in other towns and cities, and the kind of communication that Pittsburgh did and the kind of team building that we did in the wake of the pandemic is astonishing. The fact that we initiated so much that was new, the fact that we, you know, we listened to parents, we were there in the schools on a granular level, we were totally transparent with our buildings, which not other communities are very, you know, you can't say that about other communities. So I, I just, you know, my, my vote was exemplary all the way across, and I wrote a comment on each and every item. I did not let one item go uncommented on because Superintendent Jokel puts his heart and soul and brains and energy into our school system, and we as a school committee are very fortunate to have, you know, brilliance. We have Ellen Holmes from Ash West with us, who is the president of the MASC, and our delegate, Mr. Stevens, and I can tell you from many years of attending the school committee conference that we are blessed in Pittsburgh. We have amazing leadership because not every school committee member reports that in Massachusetts. And Ellen is nodding, and there you go. But I'm, you know, I'm delighted to see really high scores, but I'm, you know, I'm sorry if there, there, if people didn't write comments. We have to write comments. This, this is, this is really important. So, Mr. Stevens, I concur with your point.
Thank you, Ms. Cregan. Any other comments?
Pete?
Jean?
I mean, I don't have a question, Bob, but I just want to say, I think one of the most impressive qualities that you have is just this calm exterior. You may be inside, you're feeling a lot more emotion, but you're very measured in your response, but you're not measured in your compassion and zeal and determination to make this a great district. I think that is not measured at all, but I really, I mean, it's impressive. And in a time where we talk a lot about dysregulation right now, we talk a lot about emotional instability, you know, somebody in your position faced 24/7 with a lot of crises, I've really been impressed by how you handle that. I hope you have, like, a chance to get relaxed every once in a while because you've done a great service to the district with that, with that personality. So thank you.
Thanks. What, what Bob has done, when we read or see on television, some of the problems that are taking place in other communities, they're trying to now start to deal with racism. Bob has been very proactive, helping to train staff, students, and school committee members, and I think we've jumped out way ahead of everybody else. So, again, thank you, Bob. And Mr. Jokel has a copy of this with everybody's comments, so he'll be able to look at them and take it from there.
Can I just make, make one comment? So thank you for all the positive comments, and, and really, it's not a one-person, I guess, operation. There was 800 people approximately, ranging from people to my right, John, Craig, but all our principals, all the teachers, pairs, custodians, you know, years ago, I said that we want to be the best urban district in the state. That's still our goal. Clearly, the last year and a half have, you know, thrown a wrench into, I think, every district's goal across the country, and we're just trying to make sure that every day and every month and every year, our kids are, are, you know, better off, they're getting better educated in the support, the social, emotional, mental health support, and also that we're helping our families as we've started offering the English Second Language Program. We're part of the community, and, you know, what's important at the end of the day is that all of our community members feel welcoming and belonging here. So we made, I think, a step forward during a very difficult year. Hopefully, this, this year will be a little bit less difficult, but every year it's a different challenge, and, you know, we have different challenges like, you know, just in terms of the staffing levels across the districts, not specific to Pittsburgh, and, you know, we're just trying to find creative solutions and options to the challenges that we're facing. So I thank everybody who's, who's working in the district to help move the district forward.
Thank you, Bob. No further comments. We will move on. We can have approval of the minutes from the previous special school committee meeting.
Take a motion, accept the minutes of the November 1st, 2021 school committee meeting. Second?
All in favor?
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Yes, yes, I'm going to be in favor of the last meeting, but there's a discrepancy between that and, and this, tonight's meeting. So at what point can I point that out? Shall I point it out now?
On the 17th, school committee meeting, previous special school committee meeting.
Do I mean the first? Well...
The Monday, November 1st?
Right. It mentions the, the gift of, it says $5,000 in tonight's meeting, but it says $500 in the previous meeting.
What, what page?
Page... Well, tonight only has two pages, so it would be the second page. You see where it says, approve the donation of water estimated at $5,000.
It should be $500.
Should be $500. Yeah, it should be $500.
That's for tonight's.
That's for tonight.
On tonight's agenda.
Yes, so I'm just asking you, at what point should I point out?
We're voting on the special...
I realize that.
...November 1st. We, we can address that when it comes.
When it comes up, okay? I just didn't want to miss that.
Okay. Everybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There will be no executive session tonight. Communications?
Yep.
Ms. Cregan?
Sure. I'll just take this down, so I can speak clearly. So we had a spectacular new event over Veterans Day, and we had the 15th Massachusetts Volunteer Infantry come to the Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh Forest Hill Cemetery, and we did a special service for Civil War soldiers, and they were all soldiers who had been educated in Pittsburgh, educated in the 1840s, but still educated here. So we will be doing a similar program the week before Memorial Day, and I think that is it for me. We, oh, and theropods is back in the classroom. I'll send some pictures of the cats and the dogs at Rhine Gold.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cregan.
You're welcome.
Told there are no public comments tonight. Under superintendent's report, we are honored tonight to have Ms. Ellen Holmes, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, here tonight to make a presentation to Ms. Cregan. Ms. Holmes is also a member of the Ashburnham Westminster Regional School Committee. She's also the vice chair of the CAPS Collaborative, and it's an honor to have somebody for her statue to come here and make this presentation to Ms. Cregan. Ms. Holmes.
Pete, I very much appreciate that, but I should probably say I'm also secretary to the Keystone Collaborative as well, so I make sure I mention both of the collaborative sides. I don't want to have anyone upset that I didn't say that. I am very honored to be here tonight. First of all, it's, it's something that is very special, to be able to do this in person, to do a recognition amongst colleagues, but especially as Sally is someone I have gotten to know and respect over the years, and so it makes this particular part of my position all the more enjoyable. The MASC All-State School Committee was established to annually recognize significant achievement on the part of local school committee members. This recognition is intended to honor school committee members who have made a significant contribution to their community or their school committee, either through specific action or as an inspiration and role model for their peers and constituents. Sally Cregan has been continually active within her school committee for the past 13 years. Her focus has been on children and providing them the tools to be their best selves. Whatever direction the world may take them, Sally strives to ensure they will be prepared and contributing citizens. Her work has been to meet people where they are rather than waiting for them to come to her. As the director of a tremendous pet therapy program, Be Positive Therapy Pets, Sally and her team of volunteers meet the greater Pittsburgh community in the public schools, public libraries, and adult daycare centers, as well as at our MASC Annual Conference. The volunteers and their therapy pets offer countless hours to Pittsburgh schoolchildren, serving as reading buddies, providing support for the development of reading fluency and comprehension skills to young people, increasing the desire to read aloud with confidence. The therapy pets' calmness and judgment-free existence brings joy and confidence in simple yet exquisite ways. Decreased levels of student anxiety and improving social skills have been a benefit of the project afforded throughout the school community, but especially available during very stressful times. Be Positive is a leader in this type of programming, often sought after by colleagues throughout the Commonwealth, keen to replicate this positive experience. While doing all of this, Sally has remained an enthusiastic supporter of the arts through the Stratton Players and Riverfront Family Theater. Programming which teaches young people to allow their imaginations to soar, create with a team, and give voice publicly to characters, all of which teach and support lifelong lessons with self-confidence and the value of voice. She has demonstrated the value of the written word as an award-winning journalist with Boston Phoenix and Boston Globe, as well as a local columnist and author. Most recently, she founded the Pittsburgh Revelry, supporting and creating awareness of events and activities in the greater Pittsburgh community. Sally is an independent thinker who uses her talents to collaborate for positive accomplishments and outcomes for her community, especially Pittsburgh's children. She is the personification of the whole spirit as she models the voice of an elected official, writer, actor, arts proponent, and human rights advocate. Her constructive use of the performing arts and written language builds strong foundations for positive generational change to occur. As such, she epitomizes what an all-state school committee member represents. Division Four is extremely lucky to have her as our 2021 All-State School Committee Member. Congratulations.
Can you take your mouse?
My family.
Get a picture.
Get a picture.
Chuck, grab the pictures.
That's it, Chuck. Yeah, Chuck, you gotta go. Tease out of it. He's like, no way.
I was gonna take a picture.
Give your camera to Pete, he'll take it.
Chuck, give me, me have your camera.
I want to get a picture.
Okay. Well-deserved honor.
Thank you. I'm, I'm used to being the one who, you know, hands this, I, I'm used to not being that one who, anyway. Thank you. Thank you, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, for the, for the recognition. The recognition is really for the kids, and it's for our team, because we have the best kids in Pittsburgh, we have the best leaders in our schools, and as the local history becomes more and more important in the, in the research work I do, I see that we've always had this tradition, that Pittsburgh is a place that really celebrates excellence and innovation, and we've been like that for 150 years, almost 200, 180 years, really. So I'm really, wow, this is just like, this is, this is just wonderful. So I'll just, I'll, I'll end it there and say, I'm really grateful to be able to do this with my family in the room, because it's been a lot of Monday nights, as one child goes from small to larger, and the other child goes from baby to 12. But really, really, thank, thank you, everyone. And, you know, more, more of the same. And, you know, my colleagues, it's like, you know, we're doing the best work. We're lucky to do this work. This is a privilege. So thank, thank you. Quidos.
Okay, moving on. We just have a couple of under-budget items, a couple of things left. Greg?
We have one donation this evening to accept. This is to Mrs. Tingus at South Street Elementary School. It's from the Charles W. Moore Lodge Angel Fund. It's a donation of bottled water with the estimated value of $500. And we have one grant to be submitted. This is a financial literacy grant to be submitted through Pittsburgh High School. It's a $48,250. It's to provide support in the selection and development of materials, curriculum, professional development for in-person virtual training for students in the area of financial literacy.
Question?
To, to the point, I, I already spoke.
It's corrected.
It's corrected, okay.
I have a question.
Excuse me. Something else to say. So the $5,000 is corrected to 500?
It's 500.
Okay, and then the second one, there's a discrepancy in that it seems like we've gone past the deadline to apply for that grant. On the other paper, it said, well, it's due the 5th here on this. Recommended is, the deadline's the 5th, and we're up to the 15th.
I can't, I couldn't hear.
The submission deadline?
Yeah.
I think the question is around the submission deadline of 11/5. I can confirm that, to see if it is accurate.
Mr. Stevens, on one paper, it says that the deadline, submission deadline is 11/5/2021. This is from the school committee meeting tonight, submitted by Cali Cavalo Grants Department. But we're up to the 15th, so it seems that we've passed the deadline, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. And we have submitted it. We have, we have submitted it.
Without our approval?
It did not come to us.
I can confirm whether it has been submitted. There was an error on the date of submission.
Please check the dates.
I can double-check that, absolutely.
Let us know. I'd like to put it off if it's already submitted. I'd like to put it off until we see the correction or...
Question?
Go ahead, Jim.
If we put off the approval?
Yeah.
And the deadline is the 15th, does that mean we will not be able to submit the grant? I'd like to move forward that we approve it.
Yeah.
Be notified at the next meeting about the, either the typo or the correction. I don't know how everybody else feels, but...
Mrs. Reynolds made a motion to not submit it. Do we have a second on her motion to not submit it? Seeing no seconds, we will go to the action items.
Could I actually ask a question? Does this mean that, so is this geared mostly for the high school?
It is.
All right, so there is, I mean, people know, I guess, right, about the changes in requirements, that financial literacy is one of those elements that have to be taught at this point? So I think that's a good move on the part of the state. And I am also curious, does that mean that there is somebody dedicated with, to teaching it, or is it part of other aspects of the curriculum?
Yeah, it's part of other aspects of the curriculum right now, Jean.
And is that, whatever it's a part of, are those courses that everybody takes, or would that be an elective that people take? Maybe you could just ask, follow up on that?
I can follow up, but what I remember correctly, it's in a, it's a section in addition to a certain course that's being taught.
Yep.
But I can get more specifics for you. Currently, this will be, this money will be your, going towards expanding the program at the high school around financial literacy.
Yep.
We got a small grant last year that we started implementing, someone coming in and teaching classes with, to students around financial literacy from local banks. This will help us improve the financial literacy courses at the high school.
Yeah, my hope would be we find a way to make sure that it's a mandatory piece for everyone, like they are doing with civics education, right? Because it's so important.
Yeah, I guess if I could just add on that financial literacy is one of the top focus areas of the United Way of North Central Mass, and they're partnering with other agencies in the community to improve the financial literacy of adults, because they're finding that financial literacy is a barrier to getting out of poverty.
Yep.
So, and we've had conversations with the United Way of North Central Mass about, you know, collaborating on that. And also, there's another tool that, DESI, a very interactive tool that they're making avail- available with this grant. So it's not only financial planning, but also like college assistance and all, it runs through a variety of scenarios. So it's really a great tool that helps educate our students and their families.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, action items. Can we have a motion on 21-112 dash 21-22?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All.
Aye.
Aye.
21 dash 113?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm a no.
You're a no, okay.
Mm-hmm.
One opposed. There will be no executive session tonight. Motion for adjournment.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.